Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 23rd, 2020, regular public board meeting, business and... Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the review of justice for all.
Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Ms. Menji?
Here.
Dr. Cento?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here. Ms. Larson is ill this evening, and Mr. Flescher is traveling on business. I'll accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the January 9th regular public board meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No one has signed up in advance for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, moving right along. Our middle school student report tonight is not happening because all of our middle school students are...
In the concert.
In the concert. So that's a good reason. Elizabeth Jocelyn will give the high school student report.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Jocelyn, and I'm a senior at Haviford High School. Thank you for having me back to give another report on the many high school events and activities. January is a very busy month, but it might be the busiest for the athletic department. This past weekend, members of the winter track team traveled to the Virginia Invitational in just one weekend. The 4x400 relay, distance medley relay, and sprint medley relay teams all placed second in the state of Pennsylvania and broke school records. The track team travels to New York this weekend to compete in the Ocean Breeze Invitational. Forward Swim and Dive has been having a great season, both teams having one against Ridley in yesterday's meet. The boys' team is 8-1, and the girls' team is 6-2-1, both teams celebrating their senior night this coming Tuesday against Marple Newtown. Tomorrow night, both varsity basketball teams play Lower Marion in a doubleheader for the Hope Classic. This is the 6th Annual Hope Classic benefiting the Angelman Syndrome Foundation. The girls' team tips off at 6 o'clock, followed by the guys' team at 7:30, both teams playing for an amazing cause. The wrestling team recently defeated Penn Crest and finished in first place at the Church Farm Tournament. This weekend, the team travels to Sun Valley Invitational. Also traveling is our cheerleading team, who is headed to Garnet Valley and Ridley this weekend for invitational competitions. The team is looking forward to Central Leagues at Marple Newtown next weekend and Nationals in Orlando two weeks from today. Lastly, the Haviford Ice Hockey celebrates their senior night tomorrow before their game against Radnor. The team is currently at the top of the league with an impressive 12-0 record. This past Monday was Martin Luther King Day, and members of the Young Democrats Club and the African-American Cultural Enrichment Club volunteered their time at the Haviford Free Library. The groups worked with H Can to do arts and crafts with kids in the community and created a quilt to send to a local homeless shelter. Over the weekend, five students, including myself, attended the PMEA District 12 Chorus Festival at Sun Valley. Based on our auditions, three of us, including myself, Jack O'Leary, and Veronica Polycarpia will be advancing to the region-level festival held at North Penn High School in late February. Today, students Lily Pollack and Amelia Lint traveled to Upper Darby for the PMEA District 12 Orchestra Festival, where they will also audition for the chance to advance to the region festival. Next Friday is the Wing Bowl, one of Haviford's greatest traditions. This is the 14th Annual Wing Bowl, run by Best Buddies, and it is by far the biggest fundraiser of the year. Contestants have to, you guessed it, eat as many wings as possible in order to win. There is a teacher round, a student round, and a final round, which is a face-off between the two winners. While the competition itself is just for fun, the event truly does bring the school together to promote inclusion, which is what makes it so special. Tomorrow marks the end of our first semester, and students will be starting new classes come Monday. It is absolutely wild that I am about to enter my last semester here in Haviford School District, and that I started at Linwood Elementary over 12 years ago. While we're halfway through the school year, there are still many exciting events to go the next few months, and I'm looking forward to sharing them with you. Thank you again.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Tonight, we congratulate Chief John Viola on reaching a career milestone. On January 16th, 1970, Chief John Viola joined the Haviford Township Police Department and has been dutifully serving the residents of our township for 50 years. Our schools are just one facet of the entire community that is served by Chief Viola. At a recent celebration for the chief, Deputy Chief Joe Hagan noted the many changes that John has witnessed and experienced through his career: radios, pagers, cellphones, smartphones. But just think for one moment about the changes that John has seen our schools experience. 50 years ago, many children in this township walked home for lunch every day, a practice that has long since passed. Police officers did not have a regular presence in schools. And while safety drills may have been conducted, they did not include titles such as "intruder in the building" or "shelter in place." All of the doors to all of our schools were open all throughout the day and well into the evening. Chief, you've seen a lot of change in our schooling and our schools throughout your career. The daily support for collaboration with and protection of our district that is provided by the Haviford Township Police Department is outstanding, and I believe due in large part to the expectations set by Chief Viola and the way in which he himself models those expectations. The chief and I meet every month, and in the last five years, there has never, ever been a time that John canceled a meeting. The number of times a meeting had to be rescheduled is fewer than five. Responses to calls and text messages are immediate, from not only the chief, but members of his staff. The only other person who responds faster to my text messages is our solicitor, and that we get billed for. And without hesitation at all, he will come to the district any day of the week, any time of the day or night, to meet with, support, and guide us through situations involving safety and security of our children and staff. Chief, we thank you for the learning opportunities that you've provided for us, the problem-solving that you've engaged in with us, the team approach that you take to working with us, and support that you consistently provide our district. We could not ask for a better partner or a better protector. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Beth Mastercola, and I'm the proud principal of Cooper Town Elementary School. I'm here today to introduce you to members of the Cooper Town Eco Action Team. The team took a pledge when we first organized, agreeing to the terms listed on this PowerPoint. Although I am a member of the team myself, I know it will be much more effective for you to hear about how we are living up to this pledge by our dedicated student team members and our community members. Beside me is Dr. Jean Lutz, who introduced the idea of an eco-action team to Cooper Town. She's going to take a few minutes to explain to you just exactly what that is.
We considered several different green school programs, and we ended up choosing the Eco School Program. It's a global effort that was first launched in Europe 25 years ago and has been in the United States and hosted by the National Wildlife Federation for the last 11 years. We liked the Eco School Program because it was flexible and open-ended, but also rigorous. It has, you can see up there on that side, you can see the steps that they give us to take. It provides concrete guidelines and steps to help schools take action to protect the environment and make sustainability a priority. Schools can choose to pursue one or more of the program's 12 pathways to sustainability. They include topics like energy, schoolyard habitats, and consumption and waste. On the seven steps toward an Eco School up there, Cooper Town is on the third one. So the first one is you form a committee, a team, which we have. It's a lot bigger than who you see up here, too. And then you do an environmental audit, which we've done on a particular issue, and then you make an action plan, which we have done and are now moving along. So we're progressing along that circle.
With us tonight are several members of our team. Mrs. Kim Kennedy, our seminar teacher, has been an organizer and leader, along with Lizzie Gallagher, a second-grade teacher at Cooper Town. And Dr. Lutz is also an active member. In addition, Gavin Vitale, a high school junior, generously dedicated his time to make a spectacular video of our trash audit, which you will be seeing shortly. Now our team members will share. Ava?
Hello, my name is Ava Cavanaugh. On December 10th and 11th, from 3:30 to 6 o'clock, we collected all the trash in our school and brought a team together to sort through away the trash. We knew that the results would help us determine next steps, but before we discuss those, let's take a look at what we found.
Hi, I'm Beth Mastercola.
I'm Jessie Hart.
And I'm Toni and Heidi Krebs.
And we're here to take advantage of an opportunity to look at a serious issue affecting every single resident in Haviford Town and beyond: our waste.
To turn awareness to just how much we waste as a community, we've decided to sort and weigh all of the trash we throw out in just one day here at Cooper Town. We're hoping that as an Eco School, we can be a model for the entire school district and show what it takes to improve. But most importantly, we're hoping to see what the kids think about all of this waste and what they think we can do to reduce it. In our sorting, we discovered that from one day at Cooper Town, approximately 184.85 pounds of trash are thrown away, consisting of roughly 38.5 pounds of food waste, 25 pounds of plastic, 54 pounds of paper, 25.5 pounds of uneaten or unopened food, and 41.8 pounds in the category "other." Obviously, this wastefulness adds up, as in an average five-day school week, 320 pounds of just food waste are produced, and close to six tons of food waste are produced in an average school year at Cooper Town. As you can see, this job of sorting and weighing wasn't pretty, but it may surprise you to see the amazing things we can make from this trash. In February, we'll be taking recyclable pieces of plastic from our sorting and making beautiful art pieces that will be displayed around the school. After all, we want to show that anything can be repurposed, even trash. Overall, this experience was extremely revealing in just how much we waste in our disposable culture. Now more than ever, it's essential that we do more than the bare minimum when faced with problems such as the amount of waste we create. The students at Cooper Town will be making changes to combat this issue by modifying cafeteria behavior to limit contamination of recyclable items, encouraging others to reuse items, and much, much more. There are so many features of Haviford Town we have to be proud of, from our wonderful board and schools to the supportive community, and most importantly, our students, the future's leaders. The thing is, we need to take action to make sure that our kids have a future to lead.
As a result of this audit, we were able to determine our actions moving forward. My teammates will describe the action items we are focusing on for the rest of the year.
Sorry, buddy.
Ryan?
Hello, my name is Ryan Baxter. Due to all the organic food waste we found, we want to move forward with two initiatives. We want a shell table and a compost. The shell table is easy. Kids will put on a table the packaged food that they choose not to eat. Other students can then help themselves to carrots, apples, etc. Composting will be researched by students and community members to help find the best approach for our school. Our goal is to have compost up and running by next year. Claire and Luna?
Hi, my name is Claire Mohn Wilson.
And my name is Luna Shepherd.
The Eco Team learned earlier this year about the life cycle of water ball and all the reasons that go into this use. We have found from this presentation, from our audit, that we don't only need to recycle correctly, but we need to responsibly reduce our use of plastics.
We will be launching an education campaign for waste reduction at Cooper Town, including the need to reduce items. For more on this, Francie Walden and Evelyn Depatri will share more.
Hello, my name is Francie Walden.
And I'm Evelyn Depatri. When we did the audit, we noticed how many pieces of plastic were thrown away in just one day. There were 850 pieces of plastic in all. Look at this slide to see the breakdown. You'll be happy to know we are going to make colorful mobiles that will display the plastic that we threw out that day.
This art project will be displayed in our school to remind us the need to reduce, renew, and recycle. We will be reaching out to students and teachers at Cooper Town to different departments within our district and to community members to educate people with our ideas. We think it is important to take action to protect the earth.
Internet, yeah. I forget.
I just wanted to wrap up by saying that I've been really privileged to be a part of bringing the Eco School Program to Cooper Town, and I've witnessed firsthand the tremendous dedication and commitment of the teachers and the staff there, who have volunteered many hours outside their workdays, workdays that are already full beyond measure. I'm so proud of what our students have done, and I'm hopeful that with your help and support, we can create positive change. But I am also daunted. This work is complex and difficult. Many schools participate in the Eco Schools Program once and never again. Despite our Eco Action Team's abundant enthusiasm and goodwill, I don't think we can have a lasting impact unless the district finds a way to support our requests for changes in school policy and the allocation of resources. Volunteers like me come and go, but environmental sustainability is critical to the future of all of our students. I say this knowing you already do so much with limited resources, and everyone is always, always asking you to do more. But I feel like I have to say this. A 17-year-old activist, Greta Thunberg, said in her address on the climate emergency this week at the World Economic Forum in Davos, Switzerland, "The world is on fire." She also said, "Her generation won't give up without a fight." I stand here in the company of some very worthy fighters. We owe them our support. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for welcoming us here tonight. We are excited to share with you some of the work that we've started at Linwood Elementary School. I'm the principal at Linwood. My name is Gillian McGilvery. We are so grateful, first of all, we have super fantastic kids with great ideas, ready to make change, and they can't wait to share with you the good work that they're doing. Under the leadership of Mrs. Jen Sampson, Mrs. Sampson is a first-grade teacher at Linwood and connected with Mrs. Lutz from Cooper Town, to really see what was happening at Cooper Town and think about what we could do at Linwood to make some connections. And so we're really grateful for the leadership of Ms. Lutz at Cooper Town and what Ms. Sampson has done in just a couple of months with an idea and willing and a passion to change. It's been very, very exciting. We also have three parent volunteers who have worked so closely with Mrs. Sampson and with our team: Mrs. Allison Feinberg, Mrs. Melissa Romano, and Lindsay Jansen, who wasn't able to be here tonight. So, Mrs. Sampson is going to talk to you a little bit about the work that our Green Team at Linwood has been doing before our students share some of their work, too.
Hey, thank you so much. That was a really nice welcome. So, as Mrs. McGilvery was saying, I came to her and had this idea, thinking we should be doing something more in our school. It just so happened that Dr. Lutz and I met and were neighbors, and the timing was perfect. She's like, "We're doing it at Cooper Town." And so we wanted to do something, but I also wanted to make sure that it was manageable. So we are really proud of the work that we've done in the short few months, and we just came up with a short little PowerPoint to show you some pictures of things that the students have been working on. So in September, we started, we invited fourth and fifth grade students to write a small application to us to see anyone who was interested in becoming a Green Team member, and to our surprise, we had 51 fourth and fifth graders interested. So we were very happy about that, very fortunate. We had our first official meeting. The whole school participated in the National Walk to School Day in October, and that's something that our school had been participating in for many years, but this year, we wanted to add to the excitement of it. So some of our fifth-grade students wrote up announcements of the benefits of how to walk to school, to sort of generate some excitement for it. And we had our Green Team members make a Walk to School banner that every child who participated was able to sign on that day. Students who were not able to walk to school that day, or take the bus, or had to be driven, were given the opportunity to walk a lap supervised during recess and get a Walk to School sticker and sign the banner down below. In our first official meeting, we had some recycling relay races, practiced knowledge on what was trash, what was recycling, and our Green Team members sort of brainstormed some ideas of what our goal is going to be for the year and have those posted there. So then, moving on to November, students made recycle and trash posters at our meeting. They took actual items, so we could make visuals for the cafeteria, that we could have for the entire school to see, so that they could see what was trash, what was recycling. And while some students were working on that, we made individual mini posters for the classrooms as well. And then, moving on to December, one of our second-grade teachers, Jenna Ravel, started a marker recycling program, and so the whole school is participating in that. That's been really wonderful. We introduced an optional recycling video or poster contest that was held by Jason Learning and the Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries, and some of our Green Team members participated in that. We're still holding out, waiting to hear if anybody won a trip to Las Vegas, right?
Yup.
There's a lot of excitement about that. And at our meeting, we used recycled paper from our recycle bins in the school to make snowflakes to decorate the halls. We know we have a lot of extra recycling the teachers use. So then, moving on to January, we just had our meeting last week. We had a former Linwood Lion, Drew Fuentes, visit our meeting. Drew is now studying environmental science at the University of Maryland, and she came back to speak to our Green Team members, and we're hoping she's going to come back and return during spring break. There was a lot of questions from the Green Team about concerns with the new building and recycling, and poor Drew had few answers to all of that, but tried to, as much as she could. So without further ado, I'd like to invite some of our students, who have been doing some really important work. We'll start with Graham Ryan, Braden McGibney, Garrett Donahue, and Dean Connolly, who made a recycling video. Do you guys want to talk to the video first, and then we'll play it when you're finished, okay?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Braden McGibney, and we started out by brainstorming of what the video should be about. And I thought we should do about what recycling came about, about what happened from a while back. And then we figured out what happened if we didn't recycle, and that's what this video was all about. Enjoy.
I love recycling. I do. But did you know that if we don't recycle, the earth will get so polluted that humans will be lean on anymore? Recycle, follow next modern innovations: paper, cardboard, and metal panes. Because everyone recycles, the earth will be a very happy planet.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I know that we all deserve equal credit, but I don't believe that. This guy right here, Graham Ryan, deserves all of it, because he's the person who made it.
I don't have anything to say.
He is the person who managed all of it. Oh my god. He is the person who edited it all and did all the video, and everyone else was part of the storyboard. I'm Braden McGibney.
I'm Graham Ryan.
I'm Garrett Donahue.
And I'm Dean Connolly.
And we were all the makers of this video.
Mostly Graham Ryan.
Yeah, Rooney.
Thank you. All right, and next, we're going to have a post-thank you, guys. Why don't you move right over here? And next, we have a poster presentation by Maggie Watkins and Lilly Frischel. I'm going to hold it.
Hi, I'm Maggie, and this is Lilly. Thank you for inviting us tonight. We would like to give a special thanks to our friend Emma and my sister Gracie for all the help they gave us. We would also like to thank our teacher, Ms. Goldblatt, for all the support she gave us. Lilly and I go to Linwood, and both of us are on the Green Team. We are here to show you a presentation we made. Thank you, and we hope you enjoy.
Me and Maggie focus a lot on comparing. We like to focus on how the earth, if we don't recycle, then the earth will look like a piece of disgustingness. And we think that recycling and the trash is very different, because it is. And we also like to focus on the three main things that we do to recycle. First, we dump, we dump things out if there's extra food, and then we throw that stuff out. And then we clean it, we rinse it in soap and water to make sure there's no extra disgusting stuff on it. Then we put it in the recycling bin. We also liked, we worked on what we recycle and how, and what the world would look like if we didn't recycle.
Choose your side: trash or recycle?
Well, we think, we both agree that, I'm pretty sure you guys all do, too, that we choose recycling. A way we can help is with this bracelet.
We, a way we can help is with this bracelet. Now, let me take it off. Once you purchase one of these bracelets, it is one pound of trash or waste in the ocean. And the place that, the place that you can get it is for ocean.
I'm Lily Frisella.
And I'm Maggie Watkins.
Thank you so much.
So, Maggie and Lily didn't mention this, but they visited my first grade classroom last week or the week before at our morning meeting and did a wonderful presentation for our first graders, teaching them about recycling and trash. And they're taking their show on the road to some other classes coming soon. So, hopefully, well, some other classrooms get to enjoy that presentation. Thank you, girls. Also, we have Anita Feinberg and Carly Porsche, who have a presentation for you.
We made a video on Anamoto. It's about recycling, what can and cannot be recycled.
My name's Anita Feinberg.
And I'm Carly Porsche.
Thank you.
So, we're just really excited. We have, as you can see, we have no shortage of enthusiasm at the school, and this is just the 4th and 5th grade. So, Allison Feinberg, Lindsay Jansen, Melissa Romano, the parents that have been really helping me tremendously with this effort, we're kind of trying to figure out what our next steps are going to be and how we can really include the entire school also. So, we're meeting soon to plan, we're hoping to do a waste-free lunch, a school-wide waste-free lunch, educating the school on how we can do that. And along with Cooper Town, sort of figuring out how we can reduce our trash, possibly doing a Ziploc baggie collection and figuring out a way to recycle those. And we're going to hopefully have a really great Earth Day week, so we want to start planning ahead on how we can incorporate school-wide some activities for the whole week during the April month. So, thank you.
So, in closing, we'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to share with you the good work that Lily and Maggie and Anita and Carly and Braden and Graham and Dean and Garrett and all of their friends in 4th and 5th grade on the Green Team have been doing at Linwood. We are very grateful for Mrs. Sampson, and we're looking forward to next steps to come. So, thank you.
I'd like to thank all the students and the teachers, the principals, the parent volunteers. And if you'd like to stay to see an update on our construction project, you're welcome to. But if not, you can sneak out that door, and we could also let the police chief out, too.
Keep up, keep up that good work, all of our student Green Team members.
Thanks, guys. Next item on our agenda is a construction project update. Mr. Ken Matthews from CP Development. Ken?
All right, thank you very much. So, I'll try, we have about a dozen things or so to go through this evening, so I'll try and move quickly. Please stop me with any questions. So, for Linwood by update, I think everybody can see the great progress going on out there. Things remain on schedule. The weather has actually been cooperating quite well. They've been doing some heat out there to keep the concrete moving. So, that's great. You can see the skin of the building going on. Steel's about 95% complete. Now, they've actually started framing walls and interior already. There's probably two or three classrooms framed out. So, you'll kind of see the outside continue. Brick will start in another month, month and a half. So, you won't see too much more going on over the next month on the outside. Really, we'll start, the inside work will begin. So, again, things are going, going very well so far. So, we'll push to keep that moving. So, then, that being said, we have a number of change orders and some recommendations this evening, so I'll start with that. As you know, there's other consultants that have been hired on the project. We have an SEER envelope consultant, concrete testing agency, et cetera. So, one of the other items in the budget is getting a mechanical engineering firm that is a consultant for commissioning. So, basically, they, they're the experts to really go through and make sure the building is function, the building systems are functioning as they're intended to. Sounds kind of simple, but it's a lot more complicated than that, especially with all the computers, controls that are involved. So, they are an asset to the team. So, tonight, we're presenting to you to recommend approval of Stonehouse Group for $73,000 to be the commissioning agent for the rest of the project. There was a process we went through. A number of firms were solicited. We did get three quotes. They were all in the same ballpark, so to speak, and we tried to evaluate the resumes, their hourly rates, what they included, to make sure they're servicing the project accordingly. And so, we ended up with recommending Stonehouse for that. Then, I'll move into some of the changes. So, KCBA had additional service of $5,318. As you know, the existing school has to remain in service through construction. A lot of those utilities run underneath our building, the old tarracata pipes. So, there was a number of conflicts. We had to move them, get them out of way, out of the way of some foundations, and new piping going in. So, the engineer had to spend a lot of time coming out. They had to do sketches. We had to talk to the township, et cetera. So, that's what these additional services are for, above and beyond what they owe us in their contract. So, then, moving into some of the change orders, Westcott has two change orders this evening. You know, as we've talked about in the past, you hire the architect, but they're not perfect. So, there are things that we do find on the drawings throughout the process. So, there are a few of those items here amongst other changes. So, there was, they did not specify a neutral wire. It was additional $2,204 that had to be added to include that wire. And then, we're also getting a $4,592 credit back for some underground piping that did not have to be installed. So, those are the two for Westcott. Then, Steubner here has about 10 changes that will go through a number of credits and adds. So, some minor changes, a door had to be changed in the elevator room. We got a $742 credit back for that. The door got smaller. We had some other changes in doors to the electrical room that got shifted around for a better layout. That resulted in a credit of $1,579. As you recall, a few months back, you approved adding Torazo to the building. The contractor missed putting their contractual markup on that of 5%. That was not included in that approved change. So, here, this evening, that is $8,696 to be included. As you know, we also discussed, the district has decided to move forward with wireless key fob battery locks for all the classroom doors and doors throughout the building. So, we get a credit back for all of the hardware. So, all the handles on the doors that were included in the project, we get back now. So, that's a credit of $12,937. We had another, it was kind of a mishap on the drawings. They labeled the masonry incorrectly to your, to the district's advantage. So, it actually ended up in a credit of $18,699. So, one of the other consultants that the district approved was a roof consultant. They've been, again, an asset to the team. So, they've recommended that we go to a better roof edging around the building. The manufacturers have a typical detail that they use. So, this is around the perimeter edge of the roof around the entire building. It's over 2,000 linear feet. They're recommending to go with a much better detail. It's a $46,000 add to the project, the detail that's there now. Again, the architect kind of defaults to the companies, the roofing companies, for their details. And the detail that they had included in the project, it kind of leaks over time. It could stain the face of the building. It doesn't leak into the building. So, our roof consultant very, very strongly recommended this add for the long term of the building. We had another minor change here between the mason getting a credit back for some grounding of the stair tower they did not have to do. We changed a flashing detail on the wall that netted out to an increase of $3,675. In reviewing the documents, the next change is for a credit. All the cabinets in all the classrooms had more, far more locks than were needed, just something through the programming that was not picked up. So, we, the district's getting a credit back of $7,240 for that. Another small item missed in the elevator specification was a battery backup. So, in the event building loses power, we have a generator on the project, but the elevator is not on that generator, because it would have made the generator far larger than it needed to be. So, it needs a battery backup, so it lowers itself to the nearest floor and opens the doors for $1,890. And then, the last change is a zero-cost change. Again, working with the roof consultant, we actually got a slight upgrade to the roof. They just changed a little bit of the details to the actual system that's better for the long term, and that was a zero-cost change. But we need to document that with the contractor and approve it as a zero-cost change. So, those are for Linwood. For the high school project, KCBA also had another additional service. As you know, we had to go through the zoning process. And so, they, it's very difficult to judge how many meetings you have to go to, what's involved. So, they kind of put a limited amount in their contract. So, there was an additional zoning meeting. We made some changes to the parking lot, some additional surveying, and that all accumulated up to a $6,785 add to their contract. And then, by update to the high school, we're in the design process now. They'll be coming at the end of February with the design development drawings, basically the 50% design. And that will be priced, so we can confirm what the budget is, and then, start coming up with the final plan and move into construction documentation. And then, we'll also be presenting to the Township Planning Commission on February 13th will be the first meeting, and we anticipate having to go through a few meetings there before we get final approval of the plans from the township. So, that's the quick update rundown of everything. If anybody has any questions on anything, please feel free to ask.
Can I just have a clarifying question?
Yes.
The item that you mentioned there for KCBA, the additional services, we have that as a separate item on the agenda. I just want to make sure that that's what you were speaking, were speaking about.
Yeah, for the high, for the high school, correct, yes. There was, we, they were contracted by the district for a zoning fee before the design moved forward, and this is above and beyond that fee.
So, for our board members, that's item G in section five of the agenda.
So, when we see these change orders as they come in, I mean, this is pretty typical in terms of what happens during the course of a project like this. I mean, it's within the parameters of what you would determine to be like normal changes as, as the project moves on.
Yes. You're going to have, you know, as we talk about, that's why contingency is part of the planning of the budget for a job. You know, the architects, they're, the drawings aren't going to be perfect. There'll be small discrepancies. As you see in here, you know, small items missed. You know, this wire was missed. It's supposed to be four wires instead of three. It's just when they did their little notes, they missed that. So, those are the type of things that are completely normal, and we keep track of them. And if something becomes, you know, gets to the point where it's out of the quote-unquote "norm" and becomes a far too much percentage of the job, then we, you know, can look to the errors and omissions that go after the architect for that. But so far, this project, and based on where we see it, is nowhere near that. These are all regular items. And there's a lot of owner decision items, too, minor changes that are made.
Can I ask a question? Eliminating door handles, because you're going to use a fob. So, if anyone comes into this school that doesn't have a fob, I guess they have to knock on doors. You can't just go in and, do you know what I mean?
No, that's correct.
Yeah, am I right?
That's correct.
I have to know.
That's the intent, you know, is that, you know, you have to have a key fob. So, then, if you have people in and out, substitute teachers, et cetera, that can come in, you can hand them a key fob, and it's only live for three days that they're there, you know. So, there's a lot of control for you all as the district, from that standpoint, from a security standpoint.
Other questions, comments from the board? All right, well, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Things continuing?
Yes.
As they have been?
Warm weather comes soon.
Next item on our agenda is enrollment projections. Ms. Battistelli?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ushi, colleagues, and community members. Tonight, I'm going to present the enrollment projections for the next few years for the But first, I want to talk a little bit about how these numbers come to bay. There's a lot of data that's looked at to determine the projections, and that includes census data, ACS data, which is the American Community Survey data, real estate turnover in the township, live birth rates. And we also apply the cohort survival method to pass classes and groups of students. So, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. So, the cohort survival method, it compares numbers of students in a grade to the number of students in the previous grade during the previous year, and a ratio is computed. So, if there was 100 students in 2nd grade, next year, there's 95 students in 3rd grade, that's a .95 cohort survival ratio. And that's used to project future enrollments. And we use data from, we have about, I think, 20 years of classes, you know, to look at, and we base it off of a lot of data that we have over many, many years. So, now, this slide shows the actual enrollment over the last five years. This enrollment's from the October 1 snapshot the district does every year. So, it's important to say that, you know, on October 1, there might be 609 students at Chatham Park. Some students may move in, some students may move out. That number fluctuates as the year goes on, but that's October 1. So, it's important to compare it to the same day every year over five years. You can see that our enrollment has grown. There's 681 additional students from '15, '16 to '19, '20. This next slide shows the projections for the next five years. And on this slide, you can see that the elementary level has stabilized, but the large groups of students who are coming up are going through the middle school and high school, and that's where the numbers are growing over the next five years. So, you can see that the total enrollment will grow up, but the elementary levels seem to have stabilized. And this is what's projected. Some things to consider, that there's wild cards here. So, kindergarten registration, that happens. It's actually happening February 3rd. We monitor that very closely. Some years, we have more students than are projected. Some years, we have fewer students, and that's something that has to be monitored very closely because of that. This year, we're adding nighttime registrations for kindergarten registration, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And we're, we also contact families who have not completed registration. So, sometimes, families complete the online portion, and they don't complete the in-person portion. We can't assume that they're not coming. So, we call those families and try to set up time for them to come in or confirm that they've decided to send their child to another school. The other thing that's really the wild card is the occupancy of rental housing. So, we have 2,600 units of rental space in the township, and that could have a turnover, an annual turnover up to 25% each year. And we have no way of really tracking that like we do the real estate sales. So, kindergarten registration, this is just a plug because it's coming up soon. Okay, February 3rd is the online portion of registration. We're going to have nighttime registration appointments this year to accommodate different schedules. They'll all happen from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the boardroom at Oakmont. And parents will have the option, the dates are on the PowerPoint there. But when they do do the online registration, there'll be two calendars, one for daytime appointments and one for evening appointments. So, parents can select that at that time. This is just the elementary enrollment projection by school. You can see Chatham is the perfect example. example as to how these numbers can fluctuate based on a lot of different data. Chatham last year had a very low kindergarten class, three, three sections of kindergarten in Chatham, which was not what was projected. Then this year, when the students became first graders, we usually see a much higher increase than Chatham saw in that grade level. So that number affects the projections over time.
So if I could jump in for a minute?
Sure.
Because you're right on this slide. That's a prime example of why we may want to look at a demographic study or rerunning our numbers sometime next year. Because you can see, two years of a big dip have a significant impact on one school. But if there's a large increase in that, in the number of students who come into Chatham Park in September of 2020, that combined with Chatham Park exceeded what was projected for the, for this current school year, could then start to drive those numbers up as you move out into the, into those years. So it's, there's, there's a formula. But as I've said to people, the formula does not account for human behavior and the choices that, that we as humans make in our lives. Sorry.
Can we go back?
Sure.
Just on this one. So I noticed, you know, as everyone knows, we're building a new Linwood. And it looks like though the projections are about to be, are about the same. Do we have any data from when, you know, the new Chestnut Wald and the new Manoa were built, were anywhere there increases, any sort of spikes in enrollment there? You know, people choosing to send their kids to public school instead of somewhere else or something like that?
We have it. We can certainly take a look.
Yeah, just maybe we could take a look, just because if it, you know, were projected to stay flat there. And if maybe, if we're going to see a spike after 2021, it's something to think about.
The next slide shows the secondary schools. So as you can see, the middle school is projected to go up to 1,700 students. And the high school, about 2,100, 2,200 by the end of this projection. You know, we'll have the additions being built on the high school to accommodate the number of students that are rolling through our district. But that's where the growth is seen right now in the projections. And the elementary is where it's flat. But the kids are, they're here. So they're, they're getting older and they're going up.
And so is, that is the assumption that the kids who are in the elementary schools move to the middle school, move to the high school? Or are we finding that maybe kids or families who had other elementary school options, or maybe didn't live in the district, but are coming in at the middle school or high school as an entry point? Does that happen?
So it's actually both. When you look at the percentage of students by age group that our school district sees, we see a higher percentage of students as we go through the middle school and high school. So fewer students are going to other schools at those levels. But also because of the large classes that are going up.
Yeah, I think when looking at the numbers, the middle school, the peak year of about 1750 students, that's an average class size of 585. So that's, you know, that's a bigger group than we've got in the system now.
Yes. And so when the demographic study looks at those percentages, that age group, and how many we see, it does go up for those middle, for middle school and high school years.
These figures, do they include, I mean, I assume that they include kids who are enrolling in the cyber charter or in the cyber program?
In our online school for Haverford?
Online school for Haverford, excuse me.
Yes, yes.
So in other words, these numbers here, these numbers here are not the number of kids who actually be in school, but it's pretty?
Well, most of the students who do the online program actually do come to the school for part of the day. Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe more kids will start picking the online option when it's?
I mean to say charter. I meant to say that many are coming to our program. And that may increase if we get it back.
No, those students are included in those numbers. But again, most of them take some classes online and some classes in the building. So.
Sure.
Yeah. When you, Mr. Donaghy has often spoken about the environment that is at the, at our school within this community. Our kids want to be part of the life that exists in the school. So whether it's a technical school opportunity that they have to, to leave, something at the community college, they'll leave for a period of time. But there are certain times that they want to be physically in that building. But, you know, Elizabeth, you can attest to that with all the different things you're involved, you know, involved in. And, and that's a, that's tremendous that, you know, that kids want to, you know, want to be there.
Are there any other questions?
I had a question about whether or not we can also look at projections for subpopulations. I'm not sure if that's possible, but like thinking about, like, I was thinking specifically on special education.
Well, we usually see a certain percentage of students. So when we look over time, yes, there are more special ed students, but there's also more students.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But you, by our percentage?
Around, between 14 and 18, like 15% right now.
And so I know we've talked about the high school expansion project to accommodate an extra 400 students. I guess it's a little hard to pinpoint what that 400 student differences. But in the graphs that we've seen here tonight, it could be more like a 500 student increase over 2016 to what would be a, a peak with the middle school students there in '24, kind of coming in a few years later. So I guess the question is, if we're looking at a high school enrollment that could get over 2,200, is that what, is that a figure, an enrollment figure that is the basis of the planning that we've done?
The 2017 was actually the number that we were using when we, when we started that. And one of the challenges for us, Bridgette, was to talk exactly about what number. So I think what you were suggesting is let's just say the end total and not the number of students. Because certainly since 2017, students are coming.
Right.
We're just finding space in the, you know, in the building for, for them. But we will reach a point where it's like 2,200 students. So it's, when is the time that you say it's four, it's five? It's, so that was part of what we were doing for our work and preparing for the township presentations also.
Other questions from the board? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing all these smiling faces.
Thanks, Nicole.
All right. That moves us into the finance and facilities portion of things. Secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes, the financial report as of December 31st, Next item is budget transfers. I'll accept the motion to approve the budget transfers in the amount of $34,372.68 as listed.
Moved. Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? This is a roll call for Mr. Regal.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Sinto?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes. Seven voting yes. Next item is our bill list. I'll accept the motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed. General fund, $4,201,105.27. Food services, $135,423.67. Capital projects, Linwood, $1,189,743.94. And capital projects for high school renovations,
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is change orders. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of the new Linwood Elementary School Project Architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and Owner's Representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders as listed. And these are the change orders that Mr. Matthews went through earlier.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is preliminary budget and resolution. I'll accept the motion to adopt the 2020-2021 proposed preliminary budget and resolution.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of council in a residential tax assessment appeal pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 18-9978, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, I'll accept the motion to approve the additional services for KCBA Sub-Consult Gilmore Associates at a cost of $6,785 as previously discussed. Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you want me to take that?
Dr. Ruscie?
We regret to inform the board of the death of the following employee, Margaret Ketchmar, who had served as an elementary building assistant at Manoa School. Ms. Ketchmar had started working with us at the beginning of this school year.
Next item, I'll accept a, a motion to accept the following retirements and resignations as listed.
Moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the following appointments as listed.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following leave requests as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the student educational excursion as listed.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
This is my favorite part, looking at all the excursions.
What is the FBLA? Future Business Leaders of America.
Awesome.
Eight Leadership Conference. Sounds cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board reports. Mr. Schwartz?
Oh, busy nights. But I was thrilled to see these, the students and teachers who, I'm sure, I'm sure that nobody's surprised that, I was thrilled to see that there are some efforts being made at, at the schools from the stu, you know, you know, from the students there. It's very, very organic, these green efforts and eco-friendly efforts. And I'm looking forward to finding ways that the board can work with those students and work with those groups and become a little bit, you know, more, more green than we already are. So I want to thank all them and, and people in the community as well who are helping out with that. It's a great effort and I'm flung behind it.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank the students and teachers and volunteers who came in. I learned some things in the hallway about better ways to recycle. I think the kids could teach us all some of the things that they are learning. And I had worked with the Roots and Shoots team at Chestnut Wald years ago on recycling efforts. And one of the things that impressed me was that the kids were asking questions and wanted to do things that the grownups in the building and in the district didn't know and had to figure out. And I think there was a call tonight for some support and maybe policy to help with things like recycling. Back in, you know, my Roots and Shoots days, I learned that it is really hard to recycle in the lunchroom. And one of the reasons is just there's not a place to rinse containers to get them ready for recycling. So that seems like something maybe we could find a way to work around and help with. So I'd be interested in supporting those efforts. And then just wanted to report out on a couple of things. The board members, some of us, we've had a busy week or two with going to an IDC meeting. We attended the PTO meeting at the middle school. They had first had a new parents event. And there were, how many, like eight or 10 families represented, kids, and then there were volunteers from the middle school and high school that showed the kids around and answered questions. And it was, that was a really nice event to kick off the evening. And then, and then we were able to do a little board info session at their PTO meeting. Board members also went on a facility tour on Saturday morning to learn more about the high school expansion project, the need to improve the condition of the track. We looked at Linwood and went out to our maintenance facility and saw the bus parking zone, which not everybody had previously gone back that driveway to, to see what was there. So that was a good experience. And so, yeah, the board's been busy with things. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the high school students. Elizabeth didn't say how they, you know, had two days of exams. And, you know, well done on getting through those. And tomorrow is the Potter Cup. And I'll be going to that to cheer on a basketball team, our basketball team. But it's a great event. The, it's being hosted at Haverford this year. And Middle Paxton Middle School is coming over. And it's a kind of an indoor festival and also a fundraiser for pediatric cancer and lots of school spirit. So I'm excited to, to go and witness that.
Great. Thank you.
No report.
Sam?
So as your PSBA liaison, from time to time, I get emails from our Section 8 advisor who kind of sends bulletins out about some things that are happening with the PSBA. So what I usually tend to do is I'll try to email these out, but I'll hit some of the highlights here. So in case you're interested in anything else, you can talk to me about that later. There's one bullet about mental health initiatives from the state and how they impact the school districts. It's called Reach Out PA, Your Mental Health Matters. And it calls for the PA Department of Education to create a new certification for school social workers. So if you're interested in learning more about that, I'll send that out to you. And there's a link. The State Suicide Prevention Task Force issued a report that includes recommendations to address mental health in school. The recommendations include early identification and intervention of mental health challenges of young children, as well as examining the availability of mental health screening and services provided in schools, along with referrals. And there's a link to that that I'll send out that you can, if you're interested in reading a little bit more about that. PSBA is covering Governor Wolf's state budget proposal on February 4th, which is a Tuesday. So they'll, they'll be covering that. And then if you're interested, the PSBA staff will conduct a complimentary webcast for members that takes a deeper dive into the proposed budget. So I'll send you a link that you can register for the webcast. And I believe you can bring questions to that webcast and ask questions while that's going on. That'll be the following day on February 5th. Earlier this week on Tuesday, the PSBA presented testimony to the House Education Committee regarding House Bill 1897, which Larry, you might be able to speak to a little bit more in detail. But from what I understand, it requires the school districts to offer full-time cyber education programs by the 2021-22 school year. And it says that districts could create their own programs or work with third-party vendors. Existing cyber charter schools would be required to cease operations, but may serve as vendors. So there's a link, I'm sure that PSBA will be following up about their testimony and what that includes. And another advertisement to register for advocacy day on March 23rd. It's a wonderful opportunity to go to Harris It's a wonderful opportunity to go to Harrisburg and meet with some of our state legislators. I had the opportunity to go the last two years. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it this year due to a conflict. But it's a, it's a great opportunity to kind of meet with some of the state legislators and kind of see their view and to also to communicate with some of our other fellow board members at districts and hear their challenges and concerns. Because it's nice to kind of see where we fit in the midst of their concerns and, and their struggles and challenges as well. So that's it.
Thanks, Sal.
Yep.
Thank you to all the elementary students who came. That was really great. And, yeah, I learned so much too. So that was really wonderful. I really, really liked the idea of a share table. I think the less stuff that goes in the trash, the better, and especially if it's something that can still be consumed. I think that's really great and I love the idea of composting. So, yeah, all of that was really fantastic. They're doing a great job. I'm so excited to see all the enthusiasm and that it is ground up. I think that's really cool. I did want to also thank everyone for the facilities tour. It was really helpful and just to be able to see the spaces and where things are going to be and to see how quickly Linwood is going up. It's so exciting. So that was really helpful. And we got out before the snow started. So, yeah, that was good too. But, yeah, that was great. And then also thank you to the high school students who volunteered at the library for MLK Day. I went and I brought my daughter. So if you see any of them, they did a great job. There were students that were reading. There were students that were doing crafts and activities for everybody. It was open to the whole community. So there was everybody from little, small, tiny children to high school and adults and they had stuff for everybody. And the high school students did a really good job. So, so thank them. That's it.
No report, Larry?
No kidding.
No kidding. Everybody said everything.
I have a couple of things. One, just following up on Bridgette mentioned that she and I and Dr. Ruscie attended the inner district council meeting and just kind of gave an update on what the board's goals were last year and how we ended up in progress on those goals. And also talked about our goals for the coming year. It's, it's always a good group for IDC. If you're not familiar with IDC, it's got representatives from each of the schools and, and it's a, a great vehicle. We pretty much did the same type of program at the middle school PTO meeting, which was pretty well attended. On the PSBA side, there's one other thing that, that PSBA has the state divided into eight sections and periodically they have section meetings. And there's a section meeting for Section Eight, which is us, scheduled for April 7th here. So you could mark your calendars. That's a nice opportunity to also meet fellow board members from, it's any of the ninety-seven school districts in Section Eight. So I don't know how many will come, but usually that it's a good crowd. On the legislative side, there's a few things going on. Back on January 10th, I attended a meeting at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit that was convened by about ten or fifteen superintendents from southeastern Pennsylvania who are very much concerned with charter reform and trying to make sure that the governor, the governor's initiatives are supported. Those folks have continued to work and they're scheduling a press conference for this coming Monday. So keep an eye out for that. On the, on Tuesday, I went to Harrisburg. The House Education Committee held a hearing on House Bill 1897 that Sal mentioned earlier. Both, well, PSBA, the Superintendent's Association and the State Intermediate Unit Association all presented testimony, as did a panel of three cyber charter executive directors. I've spent some time with Chairman Sonny. He's been talking about cyber charter legislation for the better part of a year. And it's significant that he's, you know, he is the chairman of the Education Committee, so that carries some weight. More importantly, he's a Republican majority member of the Education Committee. And with the way the legislature is configured right now, that carries a lot of weight. I don't really think his bill is intended to go anywhere. It's, it's a, it's, it's intended to move the dialogue along. And I think that in terms of the part of it that talks about all the cyber charters would be dissolved in a particular timeframe, that's sort of, I, I look at that as throwing a high and tight fastball at somebody's head to get their attention. And I think it was effective in that regard. I'm hopeful that, you know, that maybe all the parties can, can work on some feasible and practical solutions to the cyber charter funding and accountability piece, not the least of which would be if we could agree on what a reasonable tuition rate is that could be applied statewide instead of this nonsense where every school district has a different rate. And, you know, and the fundamental problem there is that when cyber charters were created, they, they were set up to use the same rates that brick and mortar, brick and mortar charters use. And even though they have none of the expenses of a brick and mortar facility. So today, Speaker of the House, Mike Turzai, announced that he's not running for reelection. This is a, this is, this is huge. Speaker Turzai, you know, I, I have deep appreciation for the time that he's put in as a public servant, in addition to serving his, his legislative district. You know, being Speaker of the House is a pretty heavy lift. I don't know what kind of life you have left over with those kinds of obligations. That being said, I'm, I'm not sad to see him step down. He's been no friend of public education. He single-handedly stopped a shale tax agreement that had been cut between Governor Wolf and the Senate, Senate Republicans, which meant that there, you know, that revenue was not available for the general fund and it hasn't been for the past three years. He's been a huge fundraiser in support of school choice programs. Gets, gets a lot of money. So, you know, I'll be curious to see what happens, who takes his place. The other thing that's happening is, I think with his announcement today, there's, I think there's now fifteen members of the legislature who have announced that they're not running, which is pretty significant. In the southeast at least, I think there's a, there's a, there are several seats that are currently held by majority Republicans that probably have a pretty good chance of flipping. I think that for Democrats to retake the House, they would need to pick up nine seats. So it could be an interesting election this time through. And, you know, I'm not trying to be a political here, but it's just that if those nine seats were to flip, then at least we have, we would have a much better chance of seeing legislation that supports public education. So. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, resignations, and leaves of absence. The board also conferred with professional advisors regarding the construction project. Next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held February 6th, 2020, in the board conference room in the Oakmont Administration Building. Does anybody have any, any other? Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you all very much.